Good evening and welcome to tonight's general election forum, featuring the candidates for Island County Commissioner, District One and District Two. We have a lot of ground to cover, so I will keep my remarks as brief as possible. This forum is being sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Whidbey Island and Snow Isle Libraries. You can find additional information about the League on our website at www.lwvwhidbey.org. You can find information about using the libraries during our Phase Three opening on Snow Isle's website, www.snow-isle.org. Our thanks to Snow Isle for aiding in the publicity of these events, including the production of some very eye-catching posters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. The League works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. We endeavor to make democracy work by offering events like these, by registering voters, and much more. If you're interested in our work, join us. Go to our website at l w v whidbey.org and become a member today. The library's mission is to provide resources to the community for lifelong learning. Our partnership enables us to pool our resources to provide neutral and unbiased information to the public. During this time of COVID restrictions, Snow Isle would like you to know that they are providing no-contact pickup of physical materials at your local library, a wide variety of online resources, including programs, downloading print and audiobooks, to visit their website at snow-isle.org for more information. My name is Mandy McLean Stone. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Whidbey Island, and I will be your moderator this evening. My fellow panelists, in addition to the candidates, are Joanne Room, our timekeeper. Our local League president, Carol Pulliam, is our platform manager, and Karen Bolstad is on our staff and helping us monitor attendees. Candidates will be introduced in position and alphabetical order. The format for this evening will be a standard Q and A. The questions have been selected in advance by our forum committee from those submitted to us by the League members and the public. None of the questions have been disclosed to the candidates prior to the opening of this forum. The moderator will pose all the questions. Each candidate will then have an opportunity to answer all the questions. The order of the candidates in respect to questions has been determined in advance by the League organizers to ensure a random and fair sequence. The first responder to a question will have 90 seconds to answer. The remaining candidates will have 60 seconds to answer. The timekeeper will signal by showing a yellow card when 15 seconds remain and a red card when time is up. Candidates will not pose questions of each other or engage in personal attacks of other candidates during their responses. Each candidate will have one opportunity to challenge his or her direct opponent's response by showing a playing card. The challenging candidate will have 30 seconds to state the challenge, and the responding candidate will have 30 seconds to answer. Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. For further information about the candidates and to see their responses to a different set of questions, visit the LWVWA website, vote411.org. This forum is being recorded by the League. A link for viewing it will be posted on our website at l w v whidbey.org. No other recording is permitted. The League strictly adheres to the requirements of the FCC regarding the use of these recordings. Any use of the recordings requires approval in writing from the League of Women Voters of Whidbey Island, and then with a caveat that it must be broadcast in its entirety. No candidate is allowed to edit or use the footage for campaign purposes. I would now like to introduce the candidates. Please welcome the candidates for Island County Commissioner, District One, Melanie Bacon and Damian Green.
Hi.
And Damian Green. Thank you. Please welcome the candidates for Island County Commissioner, District Two, Dan Evans and Jill Johnson. For clarity, all candidates will be identified by both their first and last names. And now, on to the questions. Question number one goes to Dan Evans. And Mr. Evans, you will, or Dan Evans, you will have 90 seconds to respond to this question. Based on recent reports from the Centers for Disease Control, it is likely that a vaccine against COVID-19 will not be available for the general public until sometime in 2021. The CDC has also advised the effectiveness of the vaccine will probably be less than What measures should county government implement to prevent the spread of the virus on a long-term basis? 90 seconds.
Thank you. First, I want to thank you all for having me. I appreciate it. In regards to the COVID-19 outbreak, I think the more information that we can provide to the public, the better, to allow them to make wise decisions of how they're going to protect themselves. I think we need to make sure that we're keeping our businesses open in every possible way that we can, that we're getting kids back into school, and we need to take guidance from the CDC and other medical professionals of the best way to make sure that we're protecting people. Masking and all of these different options are very controversial, I know that, but I think that if we educate the public, they will have a very good idea of what they need to do to protect themselves, and that communication can be disseminated from the county in as much detail as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Dan Evans. Jill Johnson, you will have, candidate for District Two, you will have 60 seconds to respond.
Sorry, we got cut off there for a minute.
Jill?
Yeah.
You have 60 seconds.
So, I mean, I think the county's role in the distribution of the vaccine, we've already started working on a plan for distribution. The goal is to get 80% vaccination rate of the general public. We know that it will probably take about two back person, so it's a big lift to get to the 80%. The, the, the measures the county should, should continue to do is educate the public on our status in terms of number of infections, stay current on recommendations, so still social distancing. I anticipate that mask-wearing will be a requirement even when vaccines come out, and then again, work diligently to ensure that we're getting 80% of the public vaccinated with a vaccine that has been deemed safe by the federal government and the agencies that do the oversight, FDA, et cetera.
Thank you, Jill Johnson. Melanie Bacon, for District One, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Okay, thank you. The county commissioners must be the face of the COVID-19 response in Island County because we are the ones who establish and enforce the rules for the county employees. We monitor the cases, we respond as the case counts rise or they fall, and we delineate the expectations for the rest of the citizens of, of our, that our county has regarding masks and social distancing and safe sizes for gatherings. And we've had 318 cases of COVID-19 in Island County since the pandemic began. Forty-four of those cases happened just during the last two weeks of September. Our cases are going up rapidly. I, I, I do want to say, I'm trying to find a way to say this without being unkind, I'm angry at Damian and Dan right now because they are hosting a large in-person event at Damian's home in a couple of weeks. That, that's going to be many more than the 10 people that we are mandated that gatherings be limited to. So, I would like to hear Damian and Dan address that.
Damian Green, you have 60 seconds.
Hi, thank you, League of Women Voters and the Snow Isle Libraries for letting us have this forum to present ourselves. I'd like to say, first of all, personal attacks, we're not going to go there, but somebody's misinformed. There's not a event taking place at my house, and additionally with that, I'm not sure what you're upset about, Dan, for, but it was, anyway. Answer your question, which is what we need to do here, is, is we, we need to be educators in the role of government. We need to address it through effective listening to the people that are experts, our doctors, in taking their advice, and then educating our county residents how to follow what our doctors are recommending throughout the county. And that can go all the way up the level to the CDC, and we're, we are the, that channel to funnel information, and we help people the best we can. Some people are going to be able to comply with all measures, including wearing masks, or some people can't. We know that they suffer from oxygen deprivation. So, I think our job in the county is to educate and, and be good citizens and help our other residents know the best means we're learning now, even though we've been in plagues before. Continue to wash your hands, that's the best way to keep yourself safe.
Thank you, Damian Green. Question number two. This question goes to Melanie Bacon. Melanie, you will have 90 seconds to respond, and I'd like you to remember to keep your question, your answers focused on the question. Our recent multi-day experience with very unhealthy air due to wildfire smoke has highlighted one of the hazards of climate change. What steps do you think Island County should take to contribute to climate change mitigation?
Thank you for that question. I want to put really serious focus in toward mitigating the effects of climate change. While more can and should be done to tie future budget expenditures and building codes to transition to more carbon-neutral options, I'm going to direct the county right now to invest in active mitigation to prepare for the consequences of the inevitable sea-level rise and increased wildfires, among other threats. And as county commissioner, I'm going to implement a climate action plan where we're going to inventory and identify threats, plus mitigation and response actions with particular focus on protecting our shorelines, our aquifers, and our forests. And I will also ensure that the county salmon recovery program receives continued financing to protect and recover salmon populations who are also being affected by climate change.
Thank you, Melanie Bacon. Damian Green, you will have 60 seconds to answer the question.
Thank you. I think as far as we go with the, being in the county, we need to continue to look at new options being developed throughout the world. You know, as hydrogen becomes more and more available, I think that's going to be what we're looking at, and that's, of course, going to be a whole new change in the world, moving from oil and gas into hydrogen. So I look forward to that coming into play. I, I don't foresee taking care of the sea-level rise in Island County by asking our people who live along the beach to build a five-foot taller retention retaining wall in front of their home, taking away their view. I also don't foresee people on the beach having to raise their homes on stilts or, and then, of course, being worried about what happens with their septic and sewage and everything else being threatened by the rising tide. So, there's issues there that I think that we can help take care of, our small little insignificant part on the world stage, but I think it's a bigger picture, and hydrogen's what's going to save us in the long run, and it's a world issue more than it is an Island County issue.
Thank you, Damian Green. Jill Johnson, representing District Two, you have 60 seconds.
Well, whether we like it or not, climate change is happening, and we see, we see that all around the world. I think Damian is correct that it's not a problem that you can solve on the local level, but if every local level took action, you can have impact. Island County is participating in an ICLI study, which is evaluating our carbon footprint and comparing it year over year based on some decisions that we've been making, including holding on to our vehicles longer so that we're not replacing cars and all the energy used to produce them. We don't do that as often. Trying to reduce the number of trips our staff takes, different places. And then, and then we're also engaged in a study right now to determine the feasibility and the appropriate locations for charging stations. And I, but I also think the other part of this is it's about balance, because you can go to too many extremes to try to impact climate change, and if you're a single county our size doing it alone, you could put your county at a competitive economic disadvantage. So it's doing the right things, the appropriate things in the right way to make a difference without hurting your economy or your businesses or homeowners.
Thank you, Jill Johnson. Dan Evans, you will have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. So currently, in Island County, we have numerous people that are currently living off-island as far as Pedro Wully driving all the way back to Whidbey Island every day for work. That is a lot of a carbon footprint impact that those drivers are having. By improving our housing options here in Island County, we're going to reduce the number of people that are transporting their vehicles and themselves across that bridge and polluting our air with their vehicles. So one of the biggest things we can do is improve our housing and give people places to live here in Island County where they're working.
Thank you, Dan Evans. Question three. What changes to the Growth Management Act's comprehensive plan provide the framework for an increase in affordable housing inventory? Are there other changes that could be made that would not be in conflict with the comprehensive plan? And this question goes to Jill Johnson first. Jill Johnson, you will have 90 seconds to respond.
So, I mean, we can't change the framework of the Growth Management Act at the local county level, but what we can do is work with the state in creative ways, which we've been doing over the years. So we are limited in our density to the number of houses per acre, but working with auxiliary dwelling units may allow us to get an additional house on a plot of land that would increase density without going in conflict with the Growth Management Act. Additionally, pushing the state on looking at new septic requirements where we can maybe increase that density without being so impactful in terms of the, the septic systems, making sure that each lot that doesn't perk now has the potential to perk. And then working also, if we put the homes closer together with a bonus right now from the state, so you can put a few more homes in that area, but how you can increase that density and still allow for open space and environmental protection. I think that those are the types of changes we should be talking to the state about. The goals are in alignment with what they're trying to do on environmental protection and on affordable housing, and we want to accomplish both of those Growth Management Act mandated goals as well. It's just right now, the housing costs are coming out a little bit at the expense of the environmental protections. I think both can be achieved, but it takes leadership at the state level to also be willing to look at new and innovative ideas as it relates to how you get more growth and density into your non-urban areas. Right now, your urban areas are required to take that growth, and counties need more creative ways to, to do that as well.
Thank you, Jill Johnson. Dan Evans, you will have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. And, you know, I think Jill is right, but the conversations with the state should have started in 2016 when we created the Housing Coalition. So we do need strong leaders that are willing to go to the state and advocate on behalf of our community, and that's exactly what I will do. I know that the need is there. I know that we have to get these things changed, but the only way that we're going to pull it off is by getting people at the state level to realize the struggles that we're having here in Island County, to make sure that we get this done. So I will be an advocate for our community to get the state working the way that they're supposed to by developing relationships with the appropriate people.
Thank you, Dan Evans. Damian Green, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Yeah, I agree that we cannot change the state's Growth Management Act at a county level, and that really is pushing for the municipalities within Island County to pick up most of the slack for affordable housing on all levels of income. And so, I look at pre-landing, having, being the only non-municipal urban growth area in the whole entire Island County, which by growth management standards, to have that designation, they should have a sewer. They need to pursue sewers and implement ways maybe being used throughout the world and other parts. Not speaking coherently there, I got my mind going so fast. They should implement things being used in other parts of the world, or look at other areas like maybe expanding Langley and their sewer system and asking them to pick up some more, or look at Clinton with the Clinton Water District, or, and being able to expand or even use a joint septic and drain field. There's just alternatives out there that we need somebody to take leadership on and start bringing people together to look at it and start working for the solutions and not just saying, "We can't do it, it's beyond our control." So I think from a state level, the state needs to be, take a little bit more responsibility, and then, of course, from a local level, I think we need to be good leaders and start looking for the right solutions.
Thank you, Damian Green. Melanie Bacon, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. Affordable housing is a national crisis. There's no county in the country where someone making minimum wage can afford a two-bedroom place on only 30% of their salary. So it's a minimum wage issue as well as an inventory problem. Now, in Island County, we can create a foundation for building increased affordable housing units by changing our county codes, as Jill kind of referenced there. But to ensure that those units remain affordable in future years, we're going to need to establish a housing trust fund or a levy program, which is ongoing dedicated sources of public funding to support the preservation and production of affordable housing. Currently, there's only four communities in the state that have such a program, but I am determined that we will find a way to implement this type of a program to provide sustained affordable housing in Island County.
Thank you, Melanie Bacon. Question number four.
Excuse me, Mandy, before we move into question four, we have Jill on the chat who'd like to make a challenge. Could you ask her?
Oh, okay, yes. Jill, do you have a challenge?
I, I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. The Washington State, for my, to my opponent, the Washington State Association of Counties had worked with the state legislature to look at the Growth Management Act in Ruckelhaus, and they hired the Ruckelhaus Center to do that work. That study was completed in 2018, early 19, and I just wanted to know what my opponent's thoughts were on the Ruckelhaus Center report as it related to the county's efforts to push the state towards making changes to the Growth Management Act.
So this is a clarification to Dan Evans, am I correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Mr. Evan, Dan Evans, you have 30 seconds to respond.
I'm not fully aware of all the details of that report, but what I do know is that my opponent has not been fighting the way that she should be to get the housing that we need in our county. We've seen it time and time again, where she's tried to push low-income housing projects into our local downtown, which doesn't make sense for the location or the need. The need is there, but it's the wrong location. So the, the attempts that have been made by the county have been misdirected, but by developing the proper relationships at the state level, I believe that we can actually get things done rather than just send, sending things through a report.
Thank you, Dan Evans. So we'll move on to question four. Question four. What do you believe county government's priorities should be in the face of an anticipated significant budget shortfall in the coming year? And this question goes to Damian Green. Damian Green, you will have 90 seconds to respond. Oops, unmute yourself, Damian. Oh, not yet. Damian, you're still muted. Okay.
Here we go. It should be there again now.
Okay, good.
Thank you for that question. I believe that the county's priorities need to be on life, health, and safety, and safety being one of the big ones with our law enforcement and keeping Seattle politics out of Island County is one of my things, being a lifelong resident here with a dad who's a state trooper. I believe in a compassionate authority, and I believe that we can use more law enforcement to keep us safe. And with that, if for the people that'd like to fund the police department and maybe replace them with counselors or something, I see that more along the lines of going with our medics or paramedics and things like that to help that. I don't think our police officers need another unarmed body out there to take care of when they're being called to situations they don't know. But with that, I think the budget, based on having the issues with the concern with the reduced revenue from gas and sales tax revenues due to the stay-at-home COVID-19 era order, that I was really concerned about our county having issues financially, but then the county has made some maneuvers that have kind of made me question some things here in hiring a new director, moving the, not hiring a new planning director or taking one from inside, but spending the additional money towards the assessor and things like that. So I'm waiting until I get inside the county and have daily access to talking with the individuals that are involved and going through it line by line, and let's start looking to see where we can assure that we are taking care of the three major priorities, life, health, and safety here in Island County.
Thank you, Damian Green. Melanie Bacon, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. So the biggest challenge in 2021 will be to provide essential services with reduced revenues, no question, but there are fundamental county services that we must continue to provide in full regardless. Plus, our citizens' social services needs are increasing as our economy is strained, and so we're going to need to find ways to invest even more in human services in 2021. And so that's going to be a struggle for us, it's going to be a priority. But another challenge for us is to not let those economic troubles, our current economic troubles derail us from fulfilling our commitments on community initiatives like implementing a climate action plan and updating our codes to enhance opportunities for affordable housing and improving our broadband and our cell service and so on. We cannot let today's crisis paralyze us from being ready for tomorrow's needs.
Thank you, Melanie Bacon. Dan Evans, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. I have to agree with Damian Green. You know, life, health, and safety are the primary things that the government should be providing. Our sheriff's department, you know, talking with many of our sheriff's deputies, they're out there by themselves many times. I, you know, I spoke with one deputy that told me that he was on a call where there were seven assaulters against a woman, and he was the only person that was available to respond. That comes from a budget problem. So we need to make sure that not only is our sheriff's office properly funded, but we need to make sure that our sheriff's officers have the equipment and the training that they need to make sure that they can do their job.
Thank you, Dan Evans. Jill Johnson, you have 60 seconds.
I think we all agree that public health and safety is a top priority, but whether we like the reality or not, local government's still responsible for delivering services like elections and assessments and tax collections and auditors and marriage licenses and death certificates. And so all of those programs and services that are responsibilities of local government need to be paid for and delivered. Currently, we, we adopted our county, 2021 county budget today. We spend 58% of all current expense dollars on law and justice programming, so the courts, the sheriff's deputies. We don't spend current expense money on embedded social workers, that actually comes from a different funding source. And those, those, just to help Mr. Green understand, those services were requested by Ocarbor law enforcement, in fact. They were the partners that requested that we come up with funding to put those embedded social workers in there. So there's a lot of ways to look at public health and safety, there's a lot of different funding sources. I think the responsibility of the county commissioner is to understand the different, the 50 different funds and to leverage those out to get all the essential services out the door, not just one single one.
Thank you, Jill Johnson. Question five. Based on the experiences of the past several months, what do you believe is the best way for county government to support local businesses impacted? to support local businesses impacted by COVID-19 restrictions? Dan Evans, you have 90 seconds to respond to this question.
I think the best thing that the county can do is make every opportunity available for economic growth within our communities. In our downtown, in tax concessions to get new businesses to come in, we have to look at how are we going to grow our base? By increasing taxes on the people that are already here, that's not going to be a benefit as we're going through this crisis. We need to find ways to keep people shopping local. We need to promote shopping local, and we need to be as amendable as we can to allow things to happen in our downtowns while still being safe. But these local business owners, they're our neighbors, they're our friends, they're our family members. They're depending on us to shop at their stores, and we're depending on them to generate the tax revenue that's going to keep us going. So I would focus on promoting economic growth, which will help all of us.
Thank you, Dan Evans. Jill Johnson, you have 60 seconds to respond.
The Board of Island County Commissioners released $1 million of its CARES funding directly targeting small businesses. $333,000 of that was released in the Northwood Bay area alone. And then in addition, we just released another $300,000. Majority of that is targeting shop local efforts. So I'm excited to hear that we have unanimous support around that. And so I think there's a lot of things to do to educate citizens about the importance of shopping local, supporting your local businesses, making sure that there's consistency for our businesses so that they don't start up and then shut back down again, and the rules aren't changing. That's one of the things we advocate for frequently with the state is quit. Quit moving the ball on these guys. They're trying to plan. One other thing I would just say is as it relates to incentivizing businesses in downtown Oak Harbor, the policies and restrictions related to the things that businesses are paying for and operate in downtown Oak Harbor are once again, Dan, controlled by the city of Oak Harbor. So there's a jurisdictional difference that needs to be understood when you're talking about supporting businesses in the downtown of a city.
Thank you.
My challenge.
Oh, you have 30 seconds to state your challenge.
I think it's also important for the county commissioners to be reaching out to their local business organizations to find out how the county can help. Regardless of whether you're located in the city or not, the city is located within the county. And I would expect that our county commissioners would be reaching out to these business organizations to ask what the county can do to help, rather than pointing it off on the municipality. The municipality is not doing what they should be doing. Therefore, we have to lean on the county, which the county has been absent in trying to help our businesses in regards to this COVID relief. Our current county commissioner actually made a statement on Facebook trying to call out our local Oak Harbor Main Street Association to give out $44 to every business in town like Langley did. That's not beneficial coming from our county commissioner. We expect them to show up and be part of the solution.
Jill Johnson, you have 30 seconds to respond.
I'm not sure I made that Facebook post because I have no idea what he's talking about. Secondarily, I've offered several times to come and speak to the Main Street organization, but as the president of the Main Street, it's his responsibility to invite me. As it relates to the Chamber of Commerce, I have coffee with the, I've had coffee with the two subsequent Chamber of Commerce directors since the previous one, Christine Crisp, and have made myself available any time that I've been invited or asked, but I don't barge in where I'm not invited or I'm not welcome. I do work closely with the mayor and members of the city council to make sure that we're in sync on city jurisdictional issues. But it's important to understand your roles and responsibilities and not walk where you're not welcome.
Thank you, Jill Johnson. Melanie Bacon, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. I'm proud of the county's work on recovery, economic recovery. I'm proud of the work I personally have done to assist in those recovery efforts. As Jill said, we received 4.6 million in recovery funds from the state, which we've used to give grants to businesses to help cover losses and to individuals to help cover rent and mortgage expenses. But these funds are only available for losses that occurred this year in 2020. We've also received a few other targeted grants, but that was the big one that we're able to pass on directly to into the hands of citizens and businesses that were in need. So my concern really is how to provide financial assistance after 2020 has passed and that money is gone. So we at the county must continue to be vigilant about finding and providing funds to assist our citizens and their businesses until there's a vaccine and we at the county can end our emergency declaration.
Thank you. Damian Green, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Very sad for a lot of businesses that have closed in the last few months. Some of those businesses, we are not going to be able to help or save. So what is the best way for the county to support local businesses? I think our business people need the opportunity to be successful. And in order to have that opportunity to be successful, they can't play the yo-yo. You can do this, you can't do that, you can do this, you can't do that. It needs to be a consistent guideline. Here's what you need to follow. And then from there, trust in the businesses to treat and do what's right with their customers. Because if they can be innovative and do what they need to do and think outside the box to implement ways to be successful, then we don't have to worry about helping them financially. And we allow them that opportunity and the American dream and to be successful. So I think we need to trust our businesses, give them some freedom that they know how to best handle their customers. And if they don't, they're not going to survive. So I think we just need to look at it differently and look at individuals having the ability to do what's best for them and their businesses. They are the experts in that field, and I would trust in them.
Thank you. Question number six. The added stresses of the pandemic have exacerbated mental health problems and substance abuse. What is the best way for the county to assist people suffering from mental health crises and drug addiction? And this question goes to Melanie Bacon. You will have 90 seconds to respond.
I'm muted. Just a second here. We at the county have multiple responsibilities in providing access to mental health and addiction treatment services. We provide some direct services ourselves. We're also the funding apparatus for other professional agencies that provide direct services. We get the funds from the state and the feds, and then we disperse substance abuse and mental health grants to other agencies. We at the county, the county commissioners, serve on a variety of state and regional committees that devise and enact service delivery strategies. We lobby the folks in Olympia to provide more funds or to target programs. And we're the heavy lifters in getting major programs off the ground, such as securing the property in Oak Harbor for the new crisis stabilization center. So those are the things that we do.
Thank you. Damian Green, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Yeah, very sad that the added stress is out there. Certainly, we know from the school district that there's a lot of stress going on in domestic abuse at home. And then, of course, the drug abuse. We all know that alcohol sales are up right now. So maybe one of the best things that we could do is get people back to work. But granted, there's a pandemic, which we just went through, is is let businesses have that opportunity to be successful. Sadly, the drug addiction, mental health crisis is a national crisis that we're dealing with. And there are experts out there, but I think we could do a better job to bringing more experts to the table, especially those who deal with alcoholism, for example, those that deal with AA on a daily basis and bring them in or Allenon and bring them in and get their advice and recommendations and let us look for a better solution. Because there's a lot more people right now suffering due to the fact that we are in this pandemic. And we need, first of all, to get out of the pandemic, but second of all, deal with these issues that we are having right now with those experts that can help us.
Thank you, Damian Green. Jill Johnson, you will have 60 seconds to respond.
So what the county does well, I believe, is it targets a lot of its resources towards outreach. And I think right now during this pandemic with increase in mental health crisis and chemical dependency crisis, what we need to be doing is out in the community, reaching out to our youth and their families to help make sure they're stable and then making the appropriate referrals to the supportive and treatment agencies, continue to advocate for the state to make sure there's funding in place to help cover the cost of that treatment, continue to advocate for the state so that the wages aren't set so low that people don't want to go into that treatment. It's not, it's a very difficult job that pays very low wages, and those wages are set by the state in terms of their Medicaid reimbursement often. So continual advocacy to make sure that the resources make it back to a local community. And then fundamentally, in all things related to mental health and drug addiction, you need to be persistent and continue to walk with the individuals until they're ready to make the changes that they need to make to get different results. And that sometimes is a long process. But the county can be very consistent in making sure that they always have an outreach hand there to reach for when they're ready.
Thank you. Dan Evans, you have 60 seconds.
Well, surprisingly, I'm going to have to agree with Jill Johnson on this one. One of the big concerns, though, with the mental health problem going on right now is with our youth. You know, these kids are not in school, they're not being around other children, they're stuck at home. The bullying doesn't stop because social media never stops. And I've seen an increase in this mental health problem with the children that are directly associated with my kids. So I think we really do need to find a way to get these kids interacting with people and engaging. So that way, we can make sure that we're able to identify these problems with children before they become a problem. What that solution is, I'm not sure, but I'm going to find a way to do it because kids are our future, and we need to make sure that we're taking care of them.
Thank you. This next question, that question number seven, will go to Jill Johnson first. You will have 90 seconds, Jill. What steps can county government take in order to resolve concerns about gender and racial inequities?
You know, in all honesty, I don't, I don't know. I think that the start is to begin to have the conversations to understand where these inequities exist, to start by being unafraid to say, I don't know. I have the ability, I'm white, and so I don't see racial inequities the way other people do. I don't, I think I get it, but I have not experienced it. And so maybe some gender inequities every now and then. But I think it's being able to dialogue about it, to own where we may have our own bias, to be able to put something on the table without fear of judgment, and to say, hey, is this a normal experience and should we be talking about it? And allow for that to take place. The other thing I think is that we need to do a better job as an organization in making sure that we hire individuals that look like our community, not just like us, especially in this COVID response time period. It's something that I've been aware of. You know, we ask if you have a language barrier about three questions in on a survey that you had to find on a website. Well, if you have a language barrier, you didn't get to the website, and you certainly didn't get three questions in. And so making sure that our workforce is diverse in language, in appearance, in gender, in sexual identity. I mean, our workforce should look like our community, and then your policies flow out of individual firsthand experiences, and I think you end up in a good spot. But I think it's a long community conversation, and I don't know that there's a quick fix.
Thank you. Dan Evans, you have 60 seconds to respond.
I think the first thing is by leading by example. You know, treat people the way that you would expect to be treated regardless of your skin color or your sex. I think that's step number one. When you're walking down the street, you don't treat people differently, period. Treat everyone equally. But I do think that by trying to understand it, being out in the community and experiencing how people are being treated and asking those questions. If you see something that's happening, you say something. Leading by example, I think, is the key. This is not an easy thing to solve. It's not even an easy thing to identify. But it is something that we do have to take seriously. But I think that we can do it as a community if we lead by example.
Thank you. Damian Green, you have 60 seconds.
This is a great question because, you know, we, especially those of my generation, lived through the civil rights era. We lived through Title IX. We lived through equal opportunity employment, and yet we still have this today. So we have laws in effect. And so being on the school board, I was able to be open-minded with students that came to us with some of the experiences that they were having. And from that, which the county could maybe possibly take forward and work with too, is we created a diversity and equity policy so that we can better monitor what is happening within the school district. And as everybody here has already said, and they're making great points, because maybe we don't see it because we are white or whatever. But there are little things that happen. I don't know that they're anything really major, but we can certainly help take care of the gender and racial inequalities by examining what we are or we are not doing and having a policy or a guideline to at least look at and reference to see, you know what, this, this, we can do that. And so I think we could look at something like that within the county if it doesn't exist already. I'm not going to pretend that I know all the ins and outs of county policy because it was the same thing on the school board. Until you dive into it and you get into it and you really start to look at it, you don't know everything. And one of the greatest things I know is that I don't know everything. So if it exists, great. If it doesn't, then yeah, you could follow what we did at the school district here in the last couple of months.
Thank you. Melanie Bacon, you have 60 seconds.
Thank you. This is a time for those of us who are white people to listen with a whole heart to the stories of our fellow citizens, the citizens of color, and then take the actions necessary, whatever those actions are, to ensure that everyone has an equal place that they can share equally in the bounty that is America. Now, what we can do as a government, as an island county government, we need to make sure that Island County consistently ensures that all people feel respected and loved here regardless of race, gender, or age. Every department, every office, every policy at the county must be built around that core cultural expectation. And we must make it clear at the county that we won't protect anyone who can't treat others within that very particular expectation. And in fact, our community culture demands that level of respect.
Thank you. And now for our eighth and final question. What are your ideas about business development in our county that could increase employment opportunities for our residents while not having a negative impact on our environment? And Damian Green, you may go first with this question, and you have 90 seconds.
Great question because there are lots of things that we can do to help development for business increases here with employment and everything else in Island County. One of those things is that we can do is we can help try to get 100% or 99.9999% reliability with our internet. We can expand our broadband. And then, once we have that, businesses will say, you know what, that's in place. I can move there because I can rely on that internet service. And they're going to need that. Some of the other things that can happen with that is we need to look at our
You have broadband.
What was that? We can look at our transportation reliability. And if we have reliability of our transportation, then businesses know that their products can be delivered on a regular basis. And or if they need products delivered to them, those will also come at a regular time. And so we can stay in these smaller areas and our smaller, in our homes and so forth, we all know, especially from internet access, and not really have an impact on our environment because we're not building big, tall, high-rises or office buildings to people to work and be in. But that's the big thing. I think we start right there with the internet and the broadband, and we continue to expand from that and just open up a little bit for housing, make it available. I mean, it's just this whole circle. I guess, and I'm getting a little bit offline. I look at it and I go, I feel like the school district's declining. When we lose students, we lose funding, we lose funding, we lose good programs, we lose teachers. And so we have to create a robust community vibrant with young people and businesses, and we need to do that in a good and balanced manner, and that's what I think that we can do.
Thank you. Melanie Bacon, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. Well, just as Dan agreed with Jill a few minutes ago, I'm going to agree with Damian on this one. If we had good broadband and cell service everywhere, Island County could become a hub for telework, which is the fastest-growing job structure in the country. And by encouraging an economy that's based on a telework industry, that would allow us to that would allow us to protect our rural environment by reducing the need for commercial development and would also reduce our use of cars to go to and from work. It would also encourage millennials and Gen Z families to move here and bring their children to live here. You know, here on the south end of Woodby Island, we have an aging population. We need young people to move here and to, to replace us. And broadband is going to be the way that that's going to happen. And plus, if there's anything that we've learned from the impact of coronavirus on school scheduling, it's that students need access to good wifi in their homes in order to keep up the school.
Thank you. Dan Evans, you have 60 seconds to respond.
I'm going to have to agree as well. Internet is probably the biggest thing that we do need to focus on. Currently, last year, you may all recall when we couldn't even go to the bank because the internet was shut down across the north end of the island. That is a huge problem. I have three redundant internet systems in my office to keep me online because my office is a, is a financial institution. Those three systems were all down. That's how bad our broadband services are here on the island. So we do need to get that dealt with very quickly. Because our current market for employment and the current businesses that are here need it just to function themselves. If we're looking at more physical businesses, retail shops and restaurants and things of that nature, again, we're going to have to look at housing options to house those people. We had a business that wanted to open in our downtown in Oak Harbor, in the city of Oak Harbor. And they were not able to hire a manager for that restaurant because that person could not find an affordable home. So we do have to look at the housing options. We have to deal with the broadband. And I think that that is going to be the two biggest solutions that are going to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jill Johnson, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Well, first I want to apologize to Damian. I think I spoke over your answer because my internet was actually glitchy at the time that you were talking. So obviously broadband and internet access is a high priority. I'm located in the city of Oak Harbor. And I seem to have the glitchiest email of all of us online today. So I think broadband internet access is, is the highest priority in terms of economic growth. We have a commissioner, Commissioner Sinclair is leading a task force with the Port of Coopville to look at things, to expand broadband up and down the island, working with Woodby Tel, working with the city of Oak Harbor. And then of course, also working with Wave, I believe, who's now another company on Comeno Island to make sure that all of Comeno Island has broadband access. So it's not just a Woodby issue, broadband's also a Comeno issue. But bringing those types of jobs into our community, I think, is, is the pathway to economic growth. And I think we all agree on what the focus needs to be.
Thank you. Well, that is the last question that we have this evening. And we now have a two minute closing statement from each candidate. I would encourage all of you to remember that personal attacks or challenges are, are not appropriate. So to begin, I would like to say Damian Green, you may have two minutes for a closing statement. Damian Green is the candidate for District One.
Thank you again for allowing us this forum today. I'd like to make sure that we go back to the beginning and I address it more thoroughly in that Dan and I are not, and never were hosting an event. The Island County Young Republicans are hosting an event and my wife offered our vacant three acres next door to them. If they could not find another venue, I believe they found another venue, which is why that information is, is incorrect. And then the next thing up is that, you know, October is the month of surprises. We're, we're coming into the October surprise month. It's all fun and games and everything else. But last year I was a nominee for state senator. And then of course, I'm, I'm running now for Island County Commissioner. And one of the things that happened in my past, I was involved in a very large lawsuit with a insurance company. And I addressed that additionally on my website. So if you have questions about anything, I, I welcome you to go to my website and look at my videos and look at my platform. I'm a lifelong member here of Island County and everybody knows me. I'm an open book. It's great. Matter of fact, as your county commissioner, my door will always be open. I am always open and easy to talk to and, and we'll find solutions together. My basic idea here is to increase your quality of life without increasing your financial burden. You'll find those on my website. You know, I want to be a better advocate and better steward of what we all have. We need to take better care of what we have before we go spending money on things that we can't afford or we can't sustain. And that has been happening in the recent years in Island County government. I believe in, in life, health and safety. Those are our three primary things that we need to take care of. And as we move into this COVID-19 reduced sales and gas tax revenue and the decreasing budget, and I don't understand why they're hiring new people when this is an issue to be facing. But I'm the only one that's running, other than Jill, I guess I should say, that is experienced in decreasing funding with a $20 million budget and over 200 employees and actually writing policy and, and making policies and looking at policies and working with, you know, all sorts of different people in the community. And that shows that I'm involved here in this community. I am my tyer in this community. I love this community and I love education. And so I welcome your support and your vote for me as Island County Commissioner from District One. And if you have any questions, please reach out to me at electdamian.com. And thank you very much for this time.
Thank you, Damian Green. Melanie Bacon, you have two minutes for a final statement.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for sponsoring this debate. I do need to mention here that I actually am the person who, who manages and writes the new policies for Island County. That's part of my job. But I wanted to tell you that the commissioners, as Jill said earlier, that the commissioners just passed the 2021 budget today. And it's basically a repeat of the 2020 budget in terms of expenditures. But in terms of revenue, since we expect a decrease in sales taxes next year, the board committed today to dipping into the fund balance that they carefully built up over the last 10 years in preparation for the type of revenue emergency we're now facing. The job of county commissioner requires strong commitment and budgetary competence. And the best commissioners are those who, who are ready to just step into the weeds and really learn in detail the missions and operations of all 18 offices and departments that they fund so that they can ensure that the citizens' tax dollars are being spent in the most cost-effective and responsible manner. I've been the human resources director for Island County for 10 years. And as human resource, the, the human resources costs are by far the largest part of the county's budget. And I know more about how Island County government and the county budget functions than probably any other county commissioner candidate has ever known when they were elected to the office. I have the knowledge and experience to hit the ground running on January 1st. I also am the candidate who takes the coronavirus the most seriously. I've been working with, since the pandemic began, to ensure that the county was prepared to respond to the COVID protection needs of its employees and its citizens. And I know you want a county commissioner who regards your health and safety as important as her own. I'm also the only military veteran who's running for county commissioner. I served three years in Army Intelligence during the Cold War. And I understand pride of service and, and the importance of the, of the sacrifice that military families make. So you're going to receive your ballot in less than two weeks and I'm respectfully asking for your vote.
Thank you. And now we will hear from the candidates for District Two. Jill Johnson, you have two minutes for a final statement.
Well, I want to thank the League for this opportunity. I appreciate the fair way that you administer these forums. I also want to thank my opponent and the other two candidates for thoughtfully answering the questions. It makes it much easier for citizens to understand the issues when they can clearly understand their answers. I've been your county commissioner for seven and a half years. If you lived here eight years ago, you would know that we are in a much better place than we were eight years ago. Eight years ago, the county was not open five days a week. We currently are. Eight years ago, we were talking about contracting in Mississauga County for law enforcement services on Comeno Island. That is no longer a conversation. It's even on the table. We've invested in building a new county administration building on Comeno Island to deliver our services to the citizens. A project that was on the shelf for years that got pulled off the shelf and is just now being completed. I am proud that we have access to mental health stabilization services in our county now with the addition of the new stabilization center that will be completed this month. We've I'm, I'm just looking at my list here, but you know, it's hard to remember all the different things. We've added increased access to government services through the website. We've improved our planning department and our permit turnaround times. We've built access to cares for those who are struggling and who never had it before. All of these types of things have been accomplished over the last eight years and I'm proud of those things. I, I will say I'm a little discouraged to hear the comments about the new administration, administrative services position we put in place. Had any candidates reached out to me, I would have explained to them that we took three internal departments, turned it into one department with a single department head. And they will have, instead of having three department heads, we'll have three managers with an overall cost savings of about $230,000 when it's all said and done. So those were structural changes that were made with knowledge and, and experience. And I'm happy to talk about any of those things with anybody who's willing to ask. And oh, and we built that darn Oaks Road, which I'm super proud of because it's a bypass road off of Highway 525, a major safety improvement. Look, I think you're better off than you were eight years ago. I ask for your continued trust. I'm here for you. I'm passionate, but it's for you and not for me. I, I, I really want the best for our county. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jill. And Dan Evans, you have two minutes to make a closing statement.
Well, first I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having me and thank you to the other candidates. I'm running for county commissioner because I do not feel like we're getting things done. And the things that we are getting done, they're not in the best interest of the community without public meetings and hearing what people have to say. Our sheriff's office is understaffed, currently operating at 50% of where it should be. This is one of the most important roles of our government when it comes to life, health and safety. I know we can do better. True leadership is proactive and comes with open communication and transparency, which we have not had for years. I'm committed to being open and available to all of my constituents. I will not talk down to you. I will not block you on Facebook for disagreeing with me. And I will represent you in a professional manner all the time. Our current leadership, they're not listening to the community. They're not out here being part of the community. And without leaders being out in the community, volunteering their time, it's really hard for them to understand the true will of the people. I've said it time and time again, our government is supposed to be run by the people and that is exactly what I'm going to do. I am and will be available at Woodby Coffee on Friday mornings from now until the end of my first term. So come down and see me. I'm there Fridays from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM and I look forward to hearing from you. The most important thing I can say though is get out and vote. And I am asking for your vote because I know that we can do this together. So please get out and make that difference by voting. And thank you again to the League of Women Voters. I really do appreciate the time.
Thank you. Dan Evans. That concludes our questions for this evening. I would like to take a moment to thank all of the candidates for participating and for being willing to serve the residents of Island County. It's much appreciated. Thank you. As moderator of tonight's forum, I want to thank the members of the committee for all their contributions to make this virtual event possible. Finally, Washington State is a vote by mail state. You will be receiving your ballot in the mail soon. Ballots submitted by the post, to the post office do not need additional postage, but must be postmarked on or before Election Day, November 3rd, by 8 o'clock PM. There are also ballot drop boxes located throughout the county where you can drop off your ballot. For a list of locations, you can go to the elections page at islandcountywa.gov. I'd also like to remind you that if you do not receive your ballot, you should contact the elections office and let them know. And if you are not registered to vote, you still have time before the election. So please call the office and get that information. Remember, your vote is your voice. Speak up and vote promptly. Our democracy depends upon it. Thank you and good night.